Okay. Nice. Okay, so I think we'll get started. We have a pretty important thing to discuss tonight, and I'm sure that's why everybody's here, in all the interest. We're lucky enough to have a joint meeting tonight with us and the Planning Commission, and we truly appreciate all the hard work you guys do. It's very phenomenal how we've gotten to this point, so we're looking forward to seeing some of the stuff that you guys have looked at for a while. And with that being said, Madam Clerk?
Councilman Daley.
Here.
Councilwoman Lennart.
Present.
Councilwoman Potescu.
Here.
Mayor Pretendri Duper.
Present.
Commissioner Nichols.
Present.
Commissioner Galant.
Present.
Commissioner Karpenko.
Present.
Commissioner Nelson.
Present.
And Commissioner Morgan.
Present.
Thank you. We have a quorum of both bodies. Thank you.
Okay. All right. At this point, we will have the invocation and pledge of allegiance led by our own council member, Dr. Ron Daley. Let's bow our heads. Father God, we thank you for the many ways in which you bless us, and tonight we thank you especially for the privilege that we have to live in a democracy where we have the opportunity to participate in the governance of our community. And we thank for you for the beautiful community that we do live in. We pray now that you will guide us in our discussions and deliberations, and we ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Join me in our nation's pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, Mr. City Manager, are there items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
This is that point in our program where we have participation from the audience. Anybody who would like to come up and speak will be allotted three minutes to talk about whatever you want, anything that's not on the agenda, or something that could be on the agenda. Last time, we didn't have a taker, so I'm hoping maybe this time. Looking. Kurt is not out there in the audience this time. If he's watching at home, I'm calling you out, Kurt. You had your opportunity last time. And I will close the public comment. All right. Moving on, we will deal with conflicts of interest as they arise, and we'll just address our main item why we're all here. Mr. City Manager, item number one, please.
So this is a joint meeting between the City Council and Planning Commission. Conrad, please.
Item number one, joint meeting with the City Council and Planning Commission. This is to provide-
Whoa. Provide preliminary review and establish planning policies and guidelines for approximately 299 acres between Mission Road and Redlands Boulevard, west of California Street. We're calling this area "The Groves at Loma Linda." And we've had some public meetings. We've had some discussions on this. Our consultants are here to provide the nuts and bolts overview of this, so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Melanie Traxler, who will continue with the presentation.
Good evening, council members and planning commissioners. As Conrad just laid out, tonight we'd like to unveil, I call it the unveiling, of the plan for The Groves at Loma Linda within Special Planning Area D. And I just wanted to take a, actually, I'm going to turn the presentation over to my colleague here in a moment, but I wanted to introduce the team here tonight. So you know me as Melanie Traxler with Planning Plus, and I have with us Karen Gully with Placeworks, and Perry Esial with Coonsman Associates, who handles traffic air quality noise, and Doug Goodman with Doug Goodman Associates on engineering matters. So the purpose of tonight really is to treat this almost as a design review process. We will be coming back to you at a future meeting on June the 12th for an official public hearing process, which will follow the natural order of that. Tonight's intended to be a little more informal in that regard, but we'd like to start off by giving you an overview formal presentation. I don't mean to be damaging our equipment here. And at that point, we'll be happy to take questions and go from there. So with no more delay, I will turn it over to Karen for you.
Thank you, Melanie. Good evening. It is a pleasure to be here tonight, to have an opportunity to unveil the draft plan. I hope that you had an opportunity to take a look at it online. You will see that there are still a few holes. We're finishing up as we speak. It will all be pulled together in time for the hearing, but we have the most important pieces, we think, in there for you to look at and to ask questions about tonight. So let me begin. So it's been about three months since we last saw you. We spent time at that final workshop, looking at alternatives and developing a preferred plan. So I'm hoping that tonight you're going to be able to see and recognize a lot of the input that you provided. That is our objective. I'm going to walk through the specific plan organization, talk a little bit about the vision and guiding principles, and hopefully get some feedback on that. And I'm then going to highlight some of the key planned features, the community structure, the very low-density designation, and the mixed-use areas, as well as the parks. Talk a little bit about the design guidelines and how we supplemented them based upon your input, and then I want to gather some additional feedback from you so we can finish this up. So the specific plan includes all the elements required by state law. It really does incorporate and build upon the Citrus Trails master plan. We think of The Groves now and the remainder of that study area as being the glue that holds everything together. And so yes, Citrus Trails is now a part of it, but it's part of a bigger vision. It includes a unifying vision and set of guiding principles. It is consistent with the general plan direction with some minor exceptions, and it provides for sufficient flexibility for incremental development over time. That's really important. You need flexibility as the market changes, and you have different developers coming on board, so we were very sensitive to that. I don't know if you all had a chance to take a look at the vision. It's a couple of paragraphs long, and it was really intended to be an aspirational piece that tried to incorporate what this, or describe what this place would look like in the next 20, 25 years, and really trying to highlight some of the things that were really important to you and the community during the outreach we did. So it talks about drawing residents, businesses and visitors to the area, creating places to gather with friends and family, providing a variety of residential neighborhoods, becoming a place to plant roots and raise your family. So I would welcome any feedback on that. It needs to be your vision and something that you feel that can be carried out over the long term in the future. Along with the vision statement, we have some key objectives with some guiding principles. So under "provide a range of housing that meets Loma Linda needs," we have some guiding principles that talk about setting aside a large area within The Groves for a large lot custom and semi-custom home development designed as a private enclave. Another guiding principle is to locate condominiums and new apartments near commercial areas and design a pedestrian-oriented environment. I'm just picking a couple out of here. Under "boosting economy," the principle is to ensure that commercial uses are located and designed in such a way that a place is created, one that is connected from a vehicular and pedestrian standpoint. Work with developers to attract desirable retail and restaurant uses with a mix of local businesses and national chains. Under "creating additional gathering and recreation areas," plan for a trail system that connects the residential neighborhoods to the commercial areas and the parks within The Groves. So the idea was, these were the guiding principles that influenced the details of the plan, and they should, and that's how, that's where you're going to see the consistency.
Do you want kind of comments as you go through? Would you rather go through the whole process and then know it's-
It's up to you. I'm good either way. Letting me go, okay. Hold on, you're, write it down. So this is the preferred land use plan. It should look similar to what we talked about at our last meeting three months ago. It reflects the input, and what we've done then is kind of created an integrated planning area system. Citrus Trails started to already kind of break out the area into planning areas, had a numbering system. We've now built onto that numbering system so the whole thing can be tracked and monitored. And then, of course, Citrus Trails as a whole has been brought into this project. And in some areas, like design guidelines and some development standards, some things have been supplemented, and we'll talk about that. Community character is important. Not everything gets reflected in a land use plan, so we created what we call the community character exhibit, and it's really designed to focus on key design ideas that are important to implement through this project, and I'm just going to talk a little bit about that. There's several roads where we are going to be requiring certain types of frontages, and what I'm describing is the type of facade that would be built into the project and how it interacts with the street. So that happens along Bryn Mar, for example, and along the internal Main Street that you may recall. So those are two primary roads where we really want to make sure that the future development is oriented to the street. Yeah, great. Yeah. We want to make sure the development is oriented to the street, not turning its back on Bryn Mar or the internal Main Street, but really activating those two streets, the internal Main Street and Bryn Mar. That's one aspect of this, and then we have some other, oh, I'm sorry, Melanie. Did I do that? You did that?
Okay. That's okay. So we also have some other special requirements. We've identified
some key view corridors. We want to think about how people enter this area, and where the key view corridors are, and how we can open those up and make sure that they remain open. So we've identified those, and they get translated into the development standards. We've built upon the monumentation plan that was done for Citrus Trails and then applied it to the remainder of the study area. We've called out the oak woodland overlay and the historical structures. There's also a phasing plan. Phase zero is basically a non-phase because the city does not control, obviously, Heritage Elementary is already there, but the other, Mission Elementary is already there, but the future school is part of phase zero. It's really a non-phase. It'll happen when the school district decides. Phase one is the existing VA center. Phase two was primarily Citrus Trails, anticipating that phase three would be the remainder of the area. So some of the key planned features. For the very low density, there was a lot of discussion about how to really guide the future design and development of this area. So let me just kind of walk through a few of those requirements that we built into the plan. The overall design intent is to create a very unique and high-end place of custom and semi-custom homes on large lots. Twenty-five percent of the lots are required to be 15,000 square feet or less, and of course, they can't go below 7,200 square feet. And then 25% must be 40,000 square feet or more. So now you're going to have the mix that you were looking for, and it is our recommendation that lot configurations should vary. We're not necessarily looking for a symmetrical layout of lots. We'd like to see it vary to kind of create more of a rural environment. Internal roads may be private streets or drives. They do not necessarily have to be public. There's no through-access from Mission Road except the walking trail that you see there. We're also requiring a conceptual plan be done of the entire planning area. So you're not going to have piecemeal development or it being parceled off into small, into lots and then sold. The whole thing has to be conceptually master-planned. And then there's a special entry monumentation required. We're showing it there at the corner, but the reality is it could be located anywhere that it makes sense, and it's really up to the future developer of that area. The other area I wanted to talk about a little bit is the mixed-use areas north of Park Avenue. I'll focus here on Planning Area 33 and 21. This is where we have incorporated our internal Main Street. Its future and final alignment is to be determined. We're providing some flexibility, but the concept is embedded into the specific plan. The idea that we want to connect a Main Street from PA 12 all the way over to Rhonda Street and then allow development to face onto that road. And we've got a special cross-section for that road that allows diagonal parking and sidewalks, you know, sidewalk seating and dining. So this internal Main Street will be highly walkable, lined with active frontages. It serves as the primary street for the mixed-use area. PA 33 and 21 are envisioned as an active living, shopping, and dining. We do allow for residential to occur, of course, above commercial uses or in a standalone configuration. And there's also the potential for future office. As the market demand grows for office, the potential is there for it to also occur along this Main Street. In general, the standards promote walkability within and adjacent to the planning area. Every single planning area has detailed requirements about connectivity to adjacent planning areas. Another aspect of the mixed-use areas, Main Street is to contain retail with residential in either a standalone or mixed-use configuration. We're anticipating live-work, walk-up town homes, courtyard housing envisioned, up to 20 units to the acre. Buildings will be required to be closer to the street. They do have flexibility in the setback, but they cannot put a ton of parking in front of them. And then outdoor spaces for dining and plazas is encouraged. In addition, the oak woodland overlay is part of that, one of those planning areas, and the boundary of that is to be determined in the future based upon the high-priority trees that have been identified by biologists, and there are-
I'm sorry, what do you mean by oak woodland overlay?
Oh, let's go back to, let's go back, oh, it's me. Let me do that. There you go.
...area with the trail system running through it. So these are the existing oak trees.
Existing oak trees?
Those are the existing oak trees. And so as part of the general plan, there were provisions in there to set aside a minimum of three acres for the oak woodland and to have it be preserved. So the oak woodland extends beyond three acres. What we've done is identify a minimum of three acres, and through the specific plan said that the priority tree should be preserved, and the boundaries of that area need to really be based upon the drip line of the oaks, and what needs to be maintained is habitat area, but we're allowing flexibility. And then there are a lot of requirements that talk about how future development can front onto this area and take advantage of having a publicly accessible native park. Did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah. In addition to the oak woodland, there is an additional public open space requirement within that mixed-use area to require kind of the extension of the larger park to the south, just to the north. So we want to kind of continue that view shed, and whether it gets extended as a water feature or not is to be determined, but it's certainly encouraged. We've got a Parks and Open Space Plan that just lays out now completely all the different parks, and we're showing what we're calling Central Park, which is the new one. That's part of the remaining area. Adjacent to North Park, which is the planned, very active sports park. And then you see the oak woodlands. Heritage Park already exists, and then we have a neighborhood park to the south, and I'm going to go through those in more detail. The other thing that this shows is how the DG Trail system is connecting to all those parks, as well as connecting to all the different planning areas. So let me go into Heritage Park. This is a conceptual design. We're open for feedback tonight. That's why it's not colored. It's not all beautiful. This is a draft. So essentially, it is designated as a special use park. As you know, it's largely undeveloped, unimproved, with the exception of the few historic homes that are just kind of sitting there, and of course, the historic adobe. So what we've done now is incorporate an access road on the west side of the park that would enable people to get up to the other activities within kind of the lower half of the park area, and we're showing the potential location of future historic homes, which could be used as a museum or private office space. We've also expanded the public recreation component. There's already an existing train car on that park. The idea of adding additional train cars and making it a place for kids with a totlot is a great idea, and then if you couple that with a museum, a children's museum, and one of those historic buildings, you've got a unique place. And we've got also a location for outdoor education, which is an important component of an education program for schoolchildren visiting the area. And then to the north, we've preserved the citrus groves and incorporated a loop trail. We're also showing a potential access, trail access along the north side of the future middle school, and to the easement, Southern California Edison easement, and the future improvements along that easement. Central Park is the new addition to the north park. Together, they create a grand park, but this park is envisioned as being very different, whereas North Park is all active uses and sports. This is much more unstructured, multipurpose play areas. We are showing a community center and small restaurants and cafes potentially locating in the north side. We are also showing an outdoor amphitheater. It's kind of in the middle to the right, Melanie. There you go. And then just to the north, we talked a lot during our last couple of workshops about the idea of being able, having this park being able to accommodate all the storm drainage requirements of the adjacent development, and either incorporating that water drainage in the way of a detention area, a lake, or a stream bed of a dry creek, if you will, that would flood at different times. So all three of those are still options on the table. For this particular design, we're showing a stream bed. What we're envisioning if this were to become a dry creek is it would be naturalized, with lots of boulders, lots of rocks, areas to play in, and then during the rainy season, it would carry water. So in addition to that, we're showing space for a potential farmer's market, community fairs, events. This is where, you know, you can host, you know, your outdoor concerts in the park, movie nights, things like that. Lots of space to do that here. Playgrounds, unstructured grass areas. We're showing in the southern, southwestern corner, the potential for a demonstration garden. Could be any number of demonstration gardens. It could be something that your water district comes in and does a demonstration garden of how you plant native and drought-tolerant vegetation, or it could be something involving ag. And then, of course, we're showing trails connecting to North Park as well as to the oak woodlands to the north. Yes. And then another key design feature we're showing here is a shared parking and drive aisle between North Park and Central Park. This would allow people to park diagonally and then drive through and access either park, which provides a great way to kind of distribute traffic and get people closer into these sports. This is the oak woodland preserve. I've already kind of described it. Preservation of priority trees. It will not be highly improved. It's going to have uses and activities that will not impact the native habitat. There is the possibility of a playground, a treehouse playground. We have an example of one there. Healing gardens, another idea. Picnic area, benches dispersed throughout. And the other nice feature of it is it connects to your future Main Street. So, design guidelines, I want to touch on those because they were a topic of intense discussion during a couple of our meetings. So as I mentioned before, the overall goal for the design guidelines is to provide consistency for architecture and landscape architecture. We drew from Citrus Trails and supplemented where we thought was appropriate. It's also consistent with your historic mission overlay, and that's already establishing the types of architectural styles that are allowed for both residential and non-residential. Although, I'm going to point out and get some comments from you all, we did incorporate in there that potentially other styles may be considered in the future, such as modern farmhouse and California ranch, which we think would be appropriate in this area. They're currently not part of the historic mission overlay, and if someone wanted to propose those styles, they'd have to come in for an amendment to that, but we do think those two styles would work well, especially in the very low-density area. Putting that out there as an idea, and love your feedback. We've also provided clarity for the, that should be, commercial architecture. The historic mission overlay calls out Art Deco, Streamline, Modern, and Googie as being optional styles, as well as, of course, drawing from the historic residential styles. We've incorporated an additional requirement that franchise architecture not be allowed, but be incorporated or styled to complement the other architectural historic styles allowed. Again, looking for your feedback on that. We've also, at your request, looked at color, and there was a lot of interest in encouraging a variety in color. So we are encouraging a variety of color palettes for single-family in particular, and we're recommending that the color selection be based upon the historical precedence. Obviously, we don't necessarily want them to be, not have anything to do with the historical style that's being selected, but we are open to modern interpretations, and it talks a little bit about that. And we also have a requirement in there that, you know, different shades of beige are not meeting the intent of the requirement. So you can let us know if we've hit it or if we need to be stronger on that. We've also expanded the tree palette. We've got some new roads now. We've got Bryn Mar. We've got the internal Main Street, and we've expanded the tree palette for those roads. And of course, the internal Main Street really does need to have a very different look and feel than the rest of the streets, so. And then, of course, the application of historical references. It was really done well in Citrus Trails, so we've taken that and brought that into the overall Groves document. The vehicular circulation and access plan, you can see the existing roads are solid, and the future roads are dashed, and we've just differentiated between secondary art trails, collectors, local streets, potential roundabouts, potential bus stops. We've also identified existing primary access points as well as proposed, and that's really important to provide that kind of guidance for future developers, and as well as required shared primary access points, especially off of California Street and Park Avenue. We do want to minimize the driveway cuts. We've got smaller sized parcels, and so to the extent we're showing here, we are recommending shared primary access or consolidated access, if you will. Then we've also got some requirements for required reciprocal through access, and this really has to do with the importance of the future senior community, which is what is those two parcels right there, having access up to the Main Street area. what is those two parcels right there, having access up to the Main Street area and having access between the two parcels. And we've got some optional-
Excuse me. As we go through, can you point out parking? Because I keep looking for parking and I'm not-
We are not showing parking on this map. You mean-
There will be some.
Yes. Parking requirements are built into all the planning areas, and I probably should talk about that a little bit. We organized all the development standards by planning area. And we'll probably go back and consolidate some of them, but the idea is everything you want to know about a planning area is located in that planning area section. And that gave us a way to customize the requirements and deal with some of these nuances about reciprocal access.
The last slide showed parking a little bit.
You want to go-
Adjacent to parking, is it diagonal or parallel?
For which? Is that what you're referring to, the parking right there?
Yes. So to your right, you look to your right, that should be parallel parking.
I think we've drawn it to fit diagonal.
That would have helped.
Which gets more.
Oh, yeah, yes.
Yeah, yeah. And that's because of the potential for a farmer's market, community fair, you're going to have higher parking demand for that park. So we've provided a few additional parking areas to accommodate that. Yeah. Retail or the restaurants would need to park themselves.
And the idea in the park plan here was to really integrate parking that made sense for the activities immediately surrounding that area. If this is a family, like this would be a place where families could come to hold, you know, picnics, birthday parties, that type of stuff. They want to be able to unload. The same with the farmer's market here. And again, people parking at the restaurants. The idea of this central corridor here is that, remember, right over here, all of this is an active sports use park. And so this then provides central access for both activities. So they can go to a sports event, they can come use the other park and have centralized parking available.
I didn't mean to derail. I just thought as you go it'd be helpful to know.
It's good. Okay, so I've covered design guidelines. Talked about that. This is the non-vehicular circulation and access plan, so this is, now you can finally see it all come together, how the DG Trails and/or the urban trails interact, interface with each other, where there's planned concrete sidewalks versus the DG Trails. We're showing the regional trail connectors as well offsite, although I'm realizing we should do the one to the, to the east. We got to, we need to do that.
Over here.
Yeah. Okay. Pedestrian crossings that we're recommending, particularly at Park Avenue. Safer route to school, which was important to our school district rep. And a class two bike lane along California. And places for reciprocal pedestrian access. And that really does tie back into getting children safely from that elementary school over into this project, as opposed to right now, walking along California. And then the same, we're putting the same thought also into the future middle school, providing pedestrian access into those projects. All right. So, questions? Feedback?
I mean, I always had lots of questions, so I'm waiting for somebody else to take the lead on this. John usually has lots of questions, too. No?
I'll start on Jeff David. Yeah, starting off with the vision, which I thought was wonderful. The planning commission is actually, you know, taken a lot of time to study, you know, some of the developments that have happened recently in Loma Linda. And we've tried to analyze some of the labor data. And in general, I'm sure I'm going to be off, but it appears to us that there are thousands of people that literally come into our community just commuting to come to the various medical centers. The vision actually articulated, you know, healthcare industry kinds of folks that were there. Is there a way within the parameters, guidelines, whatever you want to call it, Rich might be a question for you, that we can actually do more than just have this in a vision? Is this something that we can make purposeful, that this can actually reduce the commuter trips into Loma Linda to work at all of our major institutions? Can we do something that's actually purposeful or just something more than just encourage?
Well, the fact that this project is going to include housing will certainly provide opportunities for workers in the area to now own or rent in the area. Can we incorporate that as a guiding principle?
More than just encourage. Is there anything we can do that has more teeth in it? I'm just asking the question. That actually has, you know, measurable, you know, improvements in reducing the folks that commute into our town and park and do all that. That if we're going to create a livable, walkable community, and this is going to be, and we know thousands of people come into our community, commute into Loma Linda, can we do something measurable and purposeful as part of this to address that vision of addressing the healthcare institution workers? But it's just a question.
Housing.
It would be difficult through a design plan like this to dictate, for example, who can come in or not come in because the streets are, you know, accessible outside of that. What the plan can do is try to incorporate elements that, I know you don't like the word encourage, but basically encourage reduction in commuting. For example, there is the potential, even though it's some years down the road, for a transit center to be located right at California in the freeway. It's part of the rail system that Redlands is looking in. That's within less than a quarter mile distance.
It's not currently in the current plan. They've moved that to be renewed. Original plan, yes.
So the original plan, so it's to look for opportunities, I'll just say, well, to look for opportunities like that and to ensure that this plan works in tandem with those types of concepts to make them more functional. And that's really the bulk of what we can do with this plan. The other thing that we've really done in this program is look at the aspect of walkability. Try to incorporate that in a number of ways, not just within the plan itself, but as Karen pointed out, the location of the DG Trails that you've noticed within there, they're strategically located so that they align, for example, with the system that'll go through the community to the south and connect to the River Trail as well as to the Edison Corridor, so that you start to establish a regional network for walking or biking or whatever. So it's a step toward encouraging alternate modes of transportation, and that's what we can accomplish through a land use plan like this.
Well, if there's anything that's more substantive with the affordable housing aspect and actually targeting certain types of folks that we would want to occupy those, just encourage that. That's all I can do, within whatever reasonable means we have as a community, to try to do something more purposeful there. The other question I had on the guiding policies, guiding principles, there was an element there that had to do with a commercial office where it looked like we were encouraging in the document bulk, membership, organizations, institutions, stores, home improvement stores. It just seemed inconsistent with the culture, the nature that you were trying to create there, and I just wondered if that was, that was intentional or-
Can you tell me what page, do you have a page number?
I don't have a page number, but it's in guiding policy, commercial office 2.2.4.1 in the document.
Oh, that's coming from the general plan. I think.
So you don't have to, just look at it. It just seemed inconsistent to me. It didn't seem like we wanted a Home Depot right in the middle of this thing in our park-like community.
We don't.
Yeah, so check that out.
I'll just say that actually, the design guidelines ensure that large box stuff like that is discouraged, and that's consistent with what we carried over from citrus groves or citrus trails. So that may be inconsistent, we got overlooked, and we'll deal with that.
Okay. Phil, just read that section and see, make sure that it, maybe I was misunderstanding.
We will.
The other thing that, I really like the park plans and how you've sprinkled them throughout. You made mention, at least on one occasion in the document, the importance of joint school parks and community parks. Does that ring a bell? There was actually a section, I didn't write it down, but there's actually a section where you talk specifically about joint school and community parks. There, the Mission School is a pretty tight little site, but twenty seven, over twenty seven acres for a middle school is, got plenty of room for a joint use park, even something that could be used throughout the day. And I know I mentioned this at the last meeting, but if there's any way more than just a trail that connects these, to actually integrate the north end of the middle school site, it could actually be a dedicated, shared, joint use park that could really tie the Central Park into Heritage Park and, you know, that kind of stuff. It would be interesting to look at that.
We can add that desire under the development standards for the future school site?
Now, if you notice, the middle school site is also next to the Heritage Park.
Absolutely.
So it's all have the element to the north, which is middle of middle school that kind of tie into it already.
But then further tying that back into the other parks in the Central Park and the Sports Park. If you could do that, there might be some beneficial, you know, mutually beneficial things to both the middle school and the community, just something to consider. And then you talked about, these are just questions as you were going through, the low-density triangle that you said really needed to be planned in whole in its concept, that inherently means that's not to be parceled off and sold to different developers? That would prohibit that ability to-
Not necessarily that. I think that an overall conceptual plan needs to be done for the whole area.
Paid for by who?
A developer would do it.
A developer or multiple developers?
Well, if they came together and created an LLC and wanted to do it.
They would force to collaborate. Whoever owned that property developed it. That's my question.
That is the idea.
That's my question, yeah.
Yeah. I think, yeah, I think we answered it.
Yeah, very good. Those are just some of the questions I had. Thank you. Ron, I got you going there. Come on.
I want to give the planning commission an opportunity, though.
I'm really impressed on all the pieces that you're creating as these guidelines. Could you guide me a little tighter? One thing I did not see in your pedestrian circulation guidelines, so clarify if I didn't see it. The trail systems throughout, I think, are well thought out. One thing I did not see is how you're creating some kind of welcoming draw, connecting your hospitality elements of the hotels that have recently been built and giving them a comfortable way to be drawn over to the, such as the Main Street amenities, as well as parks, et cetera. I'm going to describe it more as enhanced-
Are you, which hotel components? Are you referring to the potential of a future hotel on that?
No, no, I'm sorry. These are existing hotels that have recently been built and are continuing to expand. So there's quite a few units. So getting back to your comments about visitors coming from out of town to here, and if they're using those hotels.
Yeah.
A welcoming way to get from the hotel into this system and all the amenities that you're creating here.
I think, since this is, you know, the hotels are offsite and not part of the planning area.
We agree.
But I think what they've addressed is by having enough, you know, designing parking into the park area, adjacent to it, and designing those parks so that they're accessible with driveways into it. And also, if you look at her circulation plan, she has the shared reciprocal access through multiple sites and multiple lots, so that there's an easy way to get, you're not going to have public transportation, but you can drive from the hotel to the Sports Park or to the park or to the restaurants and have a place that you're not having to circumvent areas and the big wide streets on Bryn Mawr and Park kind of create that inviting feel for the people to come there.
Well, allow me to tighten up the comment. Strictly is pedestrian circulation, not vehicular circulation. It's creating that magnet and gravity to get people to do the foot traffic, comfortable walking from the hotel elements.
From hotels, that's a distance, but I think if you go back to the trail one, she had a drawing where the, through the top of Heritage Park and then tying into the Edison Easement Trail, and then also the trail system around the VA, so that does tie back to the Redlands Boulevard.
Well, I'm-
There is a trail component that connects that.
Wonderful.
And then the other, the other kind of unique piece that we tried to do, because we agree, we want to draw people to that Main Street area. So we've got called out here, it's called a corner treatment. And within the development standards, there is a requirement to really treat that corners in a special way. And either it's two buildings that are creating an entryway, or it's some special architectural feature at the corner with signage. We want, that is the primary entrance off of Redlands into this project. So that's a requirement. Then in addition, we are requiring some type of monumentation. And in the specific plan, we talked about it could be an archway over Main Street, it could be a tower element, some type of monumentation to really denote that this is a special street. So those would be the two additions.
In closing, kind of the correct terminology of the VA hospital improvements, what was referred to as a blue zone? Would you call it?
There were, it's parks for the blues, yes.
Yes.
Because they are, we have a lot of sports parks, a lot of high-impact, high-activity parks, and we wanted to create the, around that outpatient facility, a park space that has a lower impactance for people that, you know, kind of use that place, still want to be out and be active, but don't necessarily want to be playing flag football or soccer in that process.
So I see the trails are abutting that, but didn't see anything really drawing clear attention to taking advantage of that amenity. And I assume that that amenity is still going to be a shared amenity to the community.
That is outside their fence and open to the public.
Perfect.
And then the bocce ball courts are available for you, should you have the urge.
I have a question and a comment.
Yeah.
First of all, thank you for your helpful presentation. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
And the PowerPoint was very helpful to review prior to the meeting. The parks are awesome, and I think residents will love them. My question is, they'll need to be maintained. So it's a lot of extra park. Can the city afford that? Can we maintain them regularly? Is that something that we can do? Just looking at the dollars.
If I can expand on that, because that was one of my questions, too. Not only, not only maintenance of the grass and bushes and so forth, if I go to Disneyland, they've got people full-time sweeping stuff up and keeping trash cans emptied. Now, I don't know that we can meet that standard, but I am interested in knowing what infrastructure the city's going to need to provide and how we'll fund it, so this is attractive and safe. You've got all the answers, right, Jarv?
No, sir. Well, it's easy. Just need more money. And, but, but that's a challenge. Yes, it is. And so the goal is, you are correct. You used to be on park committee. We had to maintain this park, to mow this lawn, you had to trim the trees, and yes.
So some of that can be addressed, you know, not necessarily the Central Park and the north and the south park area, but these adjacent little pocket areas as part of landscape maintenance district and part of the requirements for whoever's developing that restaurant area or the Main Street area and those kind of places. It's part of their responsibility to take care of that. But to Jarv's answer, yeah, we are adding a significant part of active use park that the city will have to maintain.
And outside of general maintenance, you know, there's been some internal discussion, too, about inviting elements into the area. So, for example, the Highway Patrol is moving their new station right across the street. That's in process. We'll be building potentially a fire station and potentially a co-op location. We've made some offers to the county, and maybe we can entice the Sheriff's Department to come in also. The idea is to create that kind of safe environment, that safe haven, which will then foster business and all of that. So you're right- So you're right, there is the general maintenance concerns, which of course, being a city that is very tight on our budget expenditures, we have to consider that stuff. But there is some idea to create that environment where it's maybe kept up a little bit better.
Another option that we did talk about is the active park that can be leased to a league for a soccer league that they can lease the facility from us and at the same time maintain their field. So that's one option too.
So we all agree that that's important. Have we looked at the financial infrastructure? Are we, do we anticipate we're going to generate enough taxes out of these businesses and homes to help fund the maintenance of all of this?
And that will be part of landscape assessment district, sir. And we'll get into that.
I had a little more questions or just clarification on the low density area.
Mm-hmm.
I was looking at your specific plan and one item you talked about is, at some point do a comprehensive plan for the area. And I'm just wondering, how much more detail can one add to that comprehensive plan when it does come together? I know that, I think Commissioner Nichols pointed to the fact about can there be joint developers, can you sell lots and things like that? How much more detail can we add to that at a future point? I'm just curious.
We talk about that, Melanie.
So when it comes to implementing the various planning areas within the project, one of the requirements of the specific plan is that every unique planning area, you know, defined by a number, has to be comprehensively planned. So for example, in the low density area, those thirty acres, somebody, if it were to be multiple property owners, they would still have to come in with a plan that deals with that entire planning area so that we understand how the roads work in it and whatever. And ideally, because of the size of it and its location and the fact it is almost primarily one large property owner at this point of time with some smaller lots in there, it works out pretty well to comprehensively plan that as a single piece rather than to chop it up. So the idea is that somebody would come in with a plan that would ultimately develop a track map for that and show the roadways within that. And at that time, I'm sorry, I don't want to step on it. At that time then, knowing what the lots are, it might be appropriate to come in with some, for example, site-specific design guidelines related to that that tie into their internal open space, private open space area within that neighborhood. And that could be layered on as CCNRs, for example.
Okay. And with that in mind, I guess what I'm thinking of is, you know, and it's my personal opinion, I don't like track homes because every home looks the same, every other home looks the same. And I like to have a neighborhood where each individual gets to decide what they want to put there, even though perhaps a developer can do it. So then maybe the only neighborhood where there may be sixty homes and they're all different, literally different in size, some are one stories, some are two stories and everything else. So with that in mind, I'm just wondering, can someone buy two lots and say, I want two acres, because no, no, your minimum is one acre and combine the two? Or can someone's, can you, you specified that twenty-five percent would be on ten thousand square foot lots and twenty-five percent at least on forty thousand. So if we're going to that specifics, then can we then add and say, you know, twenty-five percent will have minimum thirty-five foot setbacks while the rest may have fifty percent setbacks? And the reason I bring that up is because one of the things I've seen in other neighborhoods is they have large lots, but they still look like track homes. And I like the idea of having a neighborhood where, has individuals that will, someone's house may be close to the street while someone may be a hundred feet from the street. Someone may want a big front yard, someone may not want a big front yard. And I want to be able to give people the option to decide how they want to design their own little world, so to speak. So I'm just wondering, can we create those type of requirements at a later time?
Well, yes, you can add some of those requirements when the site plan for that area comes back in, but I'll also point out that the current specific plan actually already incorporates some of that requirement for variability. For example, we set what I would call like a tiered system based on lot size, so that, for example, the maximum buildable area is different based on where it is. And all of those elements work to create the type of unique individual lots that you're talking about. Also the requirement that they be perhaps looking at some irregular lot sizes and shapes, because that forces some lots to kind of go to the back and some to be at the front to kind of get that eclectic mix that you're kind of looking for.
So I guess your answer is that we can make those type of requirements. So could you put a requirement that whoever buys that land and builds on it, every single house will be different? Can you actually say whoever buys the land needs to ensure that whoever wants to have a house there is going to not look the same as your neighbors?
We can tighten up the guidelines to define what unique means in that regard, yeah.
Okay.
Certainly.
Because I mean, on the guidelines that I've seen, I've only seen like five, and literally they're all just related to setbacks and percentages of how many of each lot size, but doesn't go into the more precise detail, I'm just wondering.
The architectural.
Yes, and things of that nature, like the ones that I explained, so.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
At one of our earlier community meetings, Ovi, that they actually had parcels laid out, all the internal streets laid out, and we kind of backed off and said, hey, let's loosen it up and not stipulate anything. But I think all those things are good points that could, we could get the variable feature in there.
And I think of Redlands, I mean, I look at Smiley Heights, and Smiley Heights is a really good example of, you drive down that street and you can tell that every owner has his own taste. There's a house that looks like, you know, colonial and there's someone that looks European, and that's great. I want people to be able to basically do what they want to do without being limited by, you know, a developer says, oh, you only have three models, you've got ten thousand square foot lots, go at it, and they all look the same. You drive down that street and every other house is the same, basically.
You're wanting that, this to be an owner builder area?
You can still.
For lack of better terms.
Technically, you can still have a developer who can create some limitations, saying, I'll build your house, but your house is not going to look like your neighbor. You're going to have to choose Plan Thirty-Five and Plan Thirty-Seven, Plan Thirty-Eight, things of that nature, so.
The maintenance thing came up on the parks. I was waiting to see if anybody else would have brought it up at this point, but I'll go ahead and say it. I thought at the last meeting, we made some significant headway towards getting our heads wrapped around how we could make this lake feature actually work with tertiary water, you know, reclaimed water, whatever, and we could actually get the numbers to pencil out. And maybe you haven't put the color in your documents or whatever, but a dry stream bed seems a far cry from this really nice little water feature that was going to be a really central element. And I'm just curious, I thought we left that meeting thinking, oh, this could be feasible, this could be workable here, we could make this happen, and yet it's just sort of indicated in a gesture, one or two photographs and some stuff.
I started the idea of having a lake. And as we spend more time figuring out how much it's going to cost and who's going to maintain it, it turned out that it's going to be a dry creek.
Your view of it, and I think the rest of it felt that we wanted a lake.
So that's part of the lake maintenance district.
So exactly, exactly. So if the whole community were willing to pay for, it's a landscape assessment district will be lake assessment district, then yes, yes, that's going to happen. So it just, again, it's money thing.
Well, I think we can use money to limit how much we do a lot there, but I think the numbers that I saw, to me, weren't out of the ordinary as to the cost of building it. I know we're always concerned about maintaining it, but I think that there's going to be, if we want to create a nice community, I think the community is going to be able to allocate enough money to ensure that it maintains nice. So I don't think, I don't see money as big of an issue as some do, so.
But you were very careful to say that there's still three options on the table. So just because we laid out the dry stream bed does not mean that's the direction we have to go.
That is correct. And actually, we did do the calculations, and Doug's here to talk about engineering items. I mean, the stormwater and drainage collection plan, of which those exhibits are in the draft document you have, everything is set up and located to accomplish the concept of having a lake there as well as to handle it in terms of the stream beds. It really then comes down to how do you manage the cost of that? And so this plan does not look a lot into the financial implementation of this. But just to give you an example of the ways to start to thinking about, first of all, you know, it is a general plan policy that is listed in there, and I think this is where that one with the joint school sites came up too. It's a general plan policy to look at public-private partnership opportunities to help defray some of the costs of the park area. And realize that when you put a lake or even if the dry creek stream bed in there, that's still a detention feature that serves an area that's not just the park, it's serving all of that surrounding development. So those other planning areas are deriving some benefit about using the park space land. So there are opportunities to set up a financial arrangement to kind of offset, one, the development of that and potentially some level of maintenance. There's a nexus to that for you to consider how to set up that arrangement. And it's possible too by incorporating what we call that community use overlay within there with the little possible, you know, community commercial corner right at Bryn Mawr and Park, that little business district too. They're relying upon the visual amenity that that brings to that area, that there's some business improvement district aspect of them helping to cover some of those costs as well. Those are all ideas that can be explored when a developer comes in with an actual hard plan.
If I could follow up on that, I mean, I like the idea of a lake. I enjoy visiting San Antonio River Walk and I like water features. But you put something, put a lake in with a fountain in it, there's a lot of water evaporation. We've spent several city council meetings dealing with the continuing pressure that we feel to conserve on water too. And I want to be sure we keep that in mind because my recollection is we're not at the goals where we really need to be in terms of being a city and conserving water. Is that a factor in this? Because I'm assuming it would be.
Well, yes, but also looking at a different way of try to put the water in that lake. Right now, we have irrigation water in the Bay Valley, a B contract water that we use for irrigating that growth, the orange growth right now. So maybe we can convert.
Would that still apply though? Or do we lose those rights?
No, they still have, we still have the water source for irrigation that can be used for the lake. So that's an option.
That would not impact the pressure we feel from the state to improve our conservation rate on water use?
I need to study that a little bit more, so.
And we have the Purple Pipe system in Redlands that could be extended, right Doug?
Yes, yes. Right now, we have a Purple Pipe, which is an irrigation pipeline that we put down on Mission Road that go up, that will go up through this development. The goal at one time was to tie to the City of Redland Sewer Treatment Plant, the recycled pipeline to come down San Bernardino Avenue, come down to California. Right now, they kind of stop north of the freeway. So that water is also an option that we can use, the recycled water.
I just want to be sure we're communicating, we would be communicating this properly because now that I'm retired from my regular job, I have more time to meander through the neighborhoods and we continue to have a growing problem of people using our conservation policies as license to let weeds grow. And we've heard some of them talk about the fact that, you know, they think they're being compliant. And so, you know, there's a, there's a public relations dimension to this that I want to be careful of as well. If the city puts in a big lake with waterways, when we're asking neighborhoods to conserve, they've got to understand what the background on that, because they don't know about a Purple Pipe.
Yes, and in addition to that, I did had a conversation with the Salmonna Valley Water Conservation District.
Yeah.
That maybe it's an option that we can put a percolation basin there and use that and get some revenue out of that. So it's a conversation I already started.
Good.
Different option.
And then I just wanted to bring up another response to the idea of making sure that people know if it's going to be a lake and it is filled with water coming from an irrigation district. City of Irvine has a whole recharged water system throughout the city and it's always green and they had to put signs out during the drought, basically indicating, don't worry, it's not potable water, it's non-potable water for use. So, I mean, there's a way to do that. And then I also wanted to point Commissioner Ovi to the design guidelines, where I think you're going to find more requirements related to how buildings are sited and architecture is used within tracks. And there's a lot of very specific requirements in not being able to locate the same unit across from each other. And we do anticipate the very low density being very different from that anyway, but there are those requirements in there. Okay, good. Just want to make sure you knew they're there.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that they're assigned specifically to that area. I know those are just in general guidelines for the whole area, but want to make sure that they're placed in a way in which someone who ends up moving in that area understands that there's some very specific restrictions about what they can and cannot do over there.
And so, am I hearing from everyone that you're looking for, every home must be different? Is that what I'm hearing?
No, no, I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is, I don't want us to find ourselves planning the area thinking that's unique and in the end, we end up having thirty, ten thousand square foot lot sizes that look exactly like Mission. And in the end, all we're having is just bigger neighborhood with just, you know, slightly bigger lots. It doesn't fit the feeling of what I described. You want to walk through that neighborhood and say, wow, I'm definitely in a different area.
Remember, we have to keep within the historical design of that district also.
Absolutely, you're required to five styles.
Yeah, no, and I just that example of people with colonial and all that, but I mean, I like, for example, the picture you showed as an example. I mean, that's a good example of what I kind of want to see there. I just don't want us to get, like I said, not to repeat myself, get caught up into every other home is going to look like that because the developer says, hey, this is all you can buy here and I'm going to build it for you and you're limited to whatever it is. And Redlands has another neighborhood that they created where they basically allowed people to kind of build their own homes. And it's still, it was still designed as a neighborhood and it just looks really, really nice. Clearly, it depicts different styles and tastes. And I just want to make sure that we try to encourage that, not limit someone who goes, even all the houses we approved right now, people are going to be limited to three or four models. I hate to say it, and it's sad, but that's just the way developers make money. You know, they could mass produce a few hundred homes and everybody gets to look the same. And they've been doing that for seventy years, there's nothing new about that. But there are neighborhoods and there are cities, I've been outside Atlanta and I can name, every single city in the United States has unique neighborhoods where they have allowed people to kind of show their creativity. And I just want to make sure that we kind of encourage that in this area.
I concur with Councilman Papezku's sentiment. I don't know what the marketing implications for that is to a developer. I mean, I don't know, I assume that's where there could be an issue. But I concur and I've said it before, so I'll repeat it one more time. But to have cookie cutter houses in varying shades of brown or tan, I'm sick of it. And, but, it's not my money that's on the line as a developer trying to put this together too, but I think, I concur with what he's saying. In the process of negotiating with developers, if we can encourage a little more creativity and individualism, I agree with his point.
Okay, we'll try and strike that balance. Any other questions?
Oh, I've got more questions, go ahead.
Can you share a little bit about guidance that this plan has as far as for developers for water runoff and things? I know Councilmember Daley mentioned the pressure we're under for conservation of water. This would be a great opportunity to say, hey, look, we're doing this big development and we're implementing some really neat things. What are some of those things? What, for someone who might not? What, for someone who might not know what's happening here, what, could you share a little bit about?
Yeah, I'm going to ask our engineer to come up.
Uh, there's actually two ways to answer that question. There is the state mandatory requirements of how water quality management has to be implemented in any new project, one, small or large. Those type of things include what is called BMP's Best Management Practices, which include different ways of cleaning the water before, cleaning storm water before it's released. In this case, a part of the Central Park, uh, idea, whether it's a dry stream bed or a lake, a part of the water quality management feature will be designed into that. Um, in addition to that, uh, there are specific requirements in commercial areas, how that would be handled, where you have less open landscape area to achieve that than what is commonly done is, uh, one of two or three different methods of putting underground storage facilities underneath parking lots. Something that you never see and you've probably driven over it a hundred times in various newer developments around here where there's a catch basin, but that water doesn't go out to the San Anna River and down to the ocean. It goes to underground, uh, facilities that infiltrate water into the ground. And maybe this is a good opportunity for me to, um, comment a little bit more about the water usage. Uh, it's a very complex issue. Uh, for a lot of people, it's a bit ironic when you hear all of the, um, necessities for reducing our water usage, yet every new project has a landscape requirement and a part of the, um, you might say excuse given by, uh, c- city planners and, and community planners is that, yeah, but it, it's, it's landscape, it's going to use water, but it's going to use less water because we're going to use a zero scape type of approach. In this particular project, it's a little bit different because as you notice, they're, they're taking down orange groves right now. There has always been a water usage there supplied by the irrigation Bear Valley Mutual Water District. You still have that water, that, that water, you have water rights for that, that can be applied so that you can, it hasn't been calculated yet, but you can, uh, perhaps justify that you are not increasing the amount of water usage, you're changing its purpose. It used to irrigate orange trees, now it's going to irrigate, um, all the common areas that you need. Whether that's an exact balance, I can't answer that question, but that's, that's an argument in favor of this is not only, um, a reuse of that water, but it also then means the majority of that water is going to stay on site. Whatever isn't, doesn't turn into, uh, plants and, and, um, green life is infiltrated into the ground. Um, we don't really get enough rain around here to, um, make a, make a claim that we're going to keep every bit of water on site so that we can ultimately reuse it. It goes into, uh, the water table that kind of benefits the entire valley when we infiltrate, but it's still the right thing to do. It's the, the beneficial, uh, contribution to conservation of water on site instead of let, just letting it run off.
That would pass muster with the state regulation.
Absolutely. And, and we're required to, to, um, achieve that and encourage to do more when it's possible. This has a large enough area that, that might very well be the case. We're at a very high level of planning right now so that those specific answers can't be nailed down in detailed numbers, but this has the opportunity to do that, to, to enhance even above the, the normal standards just because of the amount of area that we, uh, have available to us.
And I assume there's a way to calculate, uh, how this would, and we're talking about the parks and the public areas, but we're talking also about, uh, significant number of homes that go in here as well as, as businesses.
Right.
And, uh, you know, when, when Councilman Papezku builds his ten thousand square foot home on two big lots with a big pool in the back, I want to be sure that we know how this is all going to fit.
That, that can be calculated. Again, this is not quite down to that level of detail to-
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
...analyze that. And I, I heard that ambition also. And I, I want to, uh, maybe also comment to the, the question of variability of lot sizes and potential. Um, I, I think the encouragement and the flexibility that has already been built into this plan is a great thing, but you're, you're, you're right on, Mr. Daley, that this is very much a developer-driven thing. You, you guys are not the developer. This has to be marketable to a developer that has to have his means of being able to make this pencil for him. And so that's a, a very relevant factor. Good that he has the flexibility, but better that he doesn't have the requirement.
Excuse me, I'd like to just add one thing to that. Um, as some of you know, an environmental impact report was prepared for this project as well, and that's available online at the city's website. And, um, there is a section in that document, section four point nine, that looks at water supply, water use. And there was a rough calculation done, um, for Citrus Trails, uh, under their EIR and this, looking at the phase three being added through, um, the fill-in portion of this, where it calculated in rough numbers, the, uh, change of water use from the grove use to, uh, the developed use. And in both the Citrus Trails project evaluation as well as this project, um, there's a net, uh, a net reduction in water use. In other words, there's more water being used now for irrigation than there would be in the developed scenario. And that takes into the, uh, some of that assumption takes into consideration the fact that, uh, it's required and assumed that the park areas would be irrigated through potable, or through, um, purple line water use.
I have one other comment.
Yes.
And thank you for explaining that. Um, and I have an eight-year-old son and a ten-year-old daughter, and I think of the water feature and I think of, oh boy, they might fall in that, um, but also my, and, and we are talking about near the schools and everything, there's going to be a lot of kids in this area. Um, my other thought is that the natural critters and things, the lizards, the fence lizards and things that my son loves, they don't usually gravitate to the ponds and things like that. So I, I actually like the, the sort of, maybe at certain times when it's rainy, it will fill up and other times it's, it's dry and the kids run in there. And so I'm happy with, with a dry, a dry bed personally.
We do have a lot of geese here in town, so we might get some Canadian geese.
That's true, yeah.
They weighed in at one of our workshops, do you remember?
I have a few questions-
Yes.
-just to follow up. Uh, we've covered a lot of what I had made notes on. One is in the historical park, you had historical structures in there. Am I correct in, if I was interpreting, uh, the footprint, uh, accurately, it would require moving some of those historical structures, correct?
The ones that are there now wouldn't move. We're talking about moving three, potentially three others, two to three others-
Into.
-into that area. And so what we've done is, is identified where we think, these are the existing ones.
Yeah, yeah.
And, uh, we think the others could be brought up into this location.
And we've already identified?
See, the, the existing layout-
Yes.
-is a little bit different than what they have.
Okay.
There's a, a street that kind of comes up in the middle with a central parking area and the houses on both sides. But the concept is, you know, as she started, these are all conceptual. The concept is very similar. And one of the things Jarv's already done is when he resurfaces the streets here in town, all his tailings and grindings-
Yeah.
-are being put down as base and that's the new street that's going in there for free.
Leave it to Jarv. Have we've al- already identified what, uh, other additional historical structures are going to be moved?
Yes, sir. One of them is an inland temporary home that could be moved by, uh, by Lenar, so, yes.
Okay, and how do we pay for that?
They are paying for it.
Who, who's they?
In this case, it's Lenar Home. It's part of conditional approval, approval for them to, to move the house.
So it's not an additional cost to this project?
No, sir. Put it on the foundation and wrap, which is mean they, they fix the roof, fix the siding and paint it.
Okay.
So the, the additional moved houses and there is one, one additional structure that's on Mission Road, the Frank Adobe that is not movable. Adobe houses don't move.
Yeah, yeah.
So somehow, when that piece develops, we'll have to figure out a way to preserve that and reuse that, that building on site. That's going to be a, a challenge. And that is, that is one of the few buildings, if the only building, on the National Register of Historic Places in Homewood.
I think you get the city councilmen and planning commissioners out there and we'll start moving it brick by brick.
There you go.
Well, actually, there, there's the possibility that, uh, to, to maintain this, um, continue to use it as a residence or somehow tying it in as if, one idea was to turn it into a community room to serve this neighborhood. I mean, so there's a lot of options for how that can be integrated within that area. The other homes, three homes that are going to be moved is there's one here at this corner that's coming out of Citrus Trails or, or Lenar, as Jarv said, that, that's part of their mitigation requirement.
Okay.
And then the two other units are along here. So if and when that area, uh, gets developed or those units could stay, but rather than demolish them, um, it's required that they be moved.
Okay. Thank you. Also, um, when you were describing the potential of, uh, housing developments in the area, you said some of the streets can be private and some can be public. And it would be up to the developer, I assume, to come up with a design.
Yes. That would only be here in the very low, in the very low areas where we're recommending that, not anywhere else. Unless a developer wanted to do-
What do you mean by the low areas?
The very low, this, very low density.
Oh, low density, low density area.
Yeah, so I, I'll call it out. Planning Area Three dash six.
Okay.
That's where we've allowed for that.
Okay, and, uh, help me understand a private street from a public street. How do you make a street private unless you're going to gate it?
Exactly, it's going to gate a community.
It'd be gated community.
And then they will maintain the road themselves.
Yeah.
You put a public basement over it.
So that's an, that's an option.
That's an option.
Yeah, okay. I do have, uh, and I appreciate you pointing out some of the parking that you had. I know that, uh, uh, Holda Crooks Park has a severe parking shortage. It, it's full up there a lot of the time. And in talking with the city manager about that park, he tells me that we attract a lot of out of, out of towners that come up to park there and look at the view and so forth. So it is what it is. But I want to be sure that we're attentive to the parking or that's going to impact the businesses, uh, and restaurants as well as, uh, some of the other features that we want to build in there. Um, soccer's becoming increasingly popular, so I assume in the sports park, there's going to be a lot of soccer played. That's going to bring a lot of cars in.
So right now, we're applying city standards, parking standards for the different types of activities?
That's where I'm nervous.
Okay. Why don't we take another look at them, work with Conrad?
Parks that don't have adequate parking.
Actually, there's two, there's two different ones. She's talking about city parking standards. If you're going to develop a property, put a building on, there are very specific parking stall counts required per seat, per restaurant or per square foot, per store or some, uh, by formulaic approach.
Okay.
And so there, as these things develop, each develop, each specific construction will need to manage its own parking relative to its use. And then secondarily, part of the discussion where we're talking about the main street and the walkable area and the sports park is, is by combining these, we really are combining trips as well. It's not somebody going, driving to the sports park and then driving to the restaurant and then driving to someplace else because once you're there. So we're, we're combining some trips in that. And, you know, we can look at some of the parking standards and really make sure that, especially for like restaurant parking, that we have, you know, sufficient. And I, I think we do, I don't think we're really bad in any of the areas where we have restaurant, um, as far as count. The areas where we have challenges is we have a lot of, like over here at the Walmart, a lot of eating establishments in one place-
Yeah.
-and half the parking lot is empty on the other side.
And I would say I share Councilman Daley's concern regarding the parking. I think generally speaking, uh, it should be looked to, uh, to increase, uh, parking standards where possible. Especially, especially in these areas because we're, we're button up, um, parks against, uh, housing against restaurants and, and each of those type of areas would even have a commuter who's going to stay at each area a different amount of time. So I, I, I would like to see, as specific plans come in, uh, parking be, uh, dealt with cautiously.
Not in a typically obvious way with seas of parking. The street, diagonal parking street where it's spread around, distributed behind the scenes, the, those seem like what you guys are already starting to think about.
And the current, what you've showed, uh, shown tonight is, is encouraging with the diagonal parking. I, I'd like to see, uh, you know, as much as we can along the other areas as well.
The same, to Commissioner Nichols' comment, yeah, to have the, a, a strong street presence on, on the main streets with parking to the rear so that we're not looking at seas of parking, the diagonal parking. And yes, that each individual development, each structure activity contains its own parking so we're not creating massive parking lots serving an area that this parking is organically spat, scattered throughout the entire development.
That's the picture.
Conrad's correct on that. The, the concept with Main Street is to do exactly that, to look at, um, kind of pockets of consolidated parking, uh, throughout and then to allow diagonal parking on Main Street for shorter-term parking. So it's the idea is like you come in and, and you're going to pick something up or you're, uh, you're going to drop off your dry cleaning or you're, so, so that that parking that is most accessible is for shorter-term stop-and-go uses versus people coming to spend some time there, um, that, that they're scattered throughout. I wanted to point out too that in, that, um, in terms of the overall concept of the plan, there's some strategy as to the placement of the parks and the relationship to the residential units too. You don't see that detail, um, at this level of the plan, but, um, for example, uh, if you were to go back and look at how Citrus Trails is laid up, the, the internal streets here, they come up with cul-de-sacs all up along this Paseo, for example. Um, there's, uh, there's a street that, uh, that follows the perimeter of this park. So there's street parking along there too, as well as a parking lot within the park. And now we're looking at adding the diagonal parking here with a special use parking lot there. And we still have street parking too. So there's, there's a lot of parking, uh, availability because of the way the uses are laid out too. And so, uh, the importance of street parking in that particular case, um, should not be diminished.
And, and you've told me what I wanted to hear. I, I, I'm primarily concerned that we be very intentional in, in considering parking for-
Totally.
-because if somebody opens a restaurant and people have difficulty finding parking and you go into places like Santa Monica and so forth, I mean, it's a mess. And, uh, and then the other consideration that I have concern about is that we don't have people that are coming to the parks and there's not enough parking, so they park in front of the residential homes. Because I'm already getting telephone calls about too much parking on residential streets because, uh, what were originally designed as a family home, uh, now is kind of institutionalized and bringing a lot of other people in and it's, it's, uh, and there's only a two-car garage, so everybody else is parking on the street. And, and there's some real frustration about that right now. I want to be sure we, we're aware of that and try to mitigate that kind of a problem in a new neighborhood we're planning.
That's a problem in a lot of communities. Uh, but I think to address that is that there's still, there's still other on-street parking within the residential areas. So we're not, for some of these community uses, we're not relying on tapping into the residential areas. These areas that I mentioned, the cul-de-sacs, these are not necessarily in front of, uh, the lots, it's, it's additional public space area.
Okay, thank you. I'm not sure which of you wants to address this. I, I'm still trying to get a handle on what a demonstration garden is.
Oh, that's our-
Uh, it sounds like somebody's going to have to provide a lot of oversight on that and who's the demonstr- I, I don't understand.
Well, this is, it, it could be a number of things. The idea that we brought up, um, water districts are very fond of creating demonstration gardens. They typically have them on their own sites, but you can also partner, partner with them and have them do it in other public areas because they-
So are these citizens that plant their own thing or?
It could, demonstration, I'm sorry, Conrad.
You're thinking of like a tomato garden.
Well, that's, that's, I'm trying to understand the difference.
This, this is not a, a tomato vegetable garden.
Yeah.
What she's talking about is something that is more of a contemplative walking space that has the little plants with the plaques that says, this is this kind of plant, this planted plant.
Okay.
How to create a water conservation garden or a butterfly attracting garden or whatever those little, those, those things are.
And there's a lot of potential partnerships for doing something like that because they want to educate homeowners on how to, you know, properly.
I see.
Plant and, and do fun things like create a butterfly garden. And there's also planting concepts that deal with pest control, so you don't have to use a lot of pesticides. So a lot of technology's been incorporated into the thinking about how you create gardens.
Thank you for that. I, I, it's a new concept to me, but it sounds promising.
But it could also be a farmer's market, so.
And, and would the city be responsible for that then? Is that part of what Public Works is going to manage?
What, are you referring to the demonstration garden?
Well, I'm asking.
I'm thinking you find partners.
I'd rather ask the questions now than get the complaints later.
You, you look for partners.
They're done, they're done with partners. Water Conservation District, Flood Control, maybe Department of Agriculture. And typically, these plants are perennial or low maintenance. They're not plants that have to be tended.
Okay. I just want to know if I'm going to have to do weeding every other Sunday or something.
If it's accessible to the school site, you could get a grant from Department of Education to do learning gardens, those kind of things all, all the time. So that, that's.
Yeah, it could be a community garden.
There's a good example of that over in Montclair, the Chino Basin Water Conservation District. Their offices has a very large demonstration garden with different low water usage plants. It's very, very nice.
Okay, good. That sounds interesting. Last question. In the beginning, you talked about and throughout actually, you mentioned historic mission overlay.
Mm-hmm.
Help me understand what that means.
It's an existing overlay that you have as part of your zoning code.
You have the historic park.
No, it's an overlay zone and it covers this area. Melanie, you can describe it better than me.
So actually, in the city's municipal code, there's a historic preservation section and that establishes the Mission Historic Overlay, which is a district. So it's a historic district. It's, it defines the area that includes the entirety of Special Planning Area D and the area to the east of that over to, I believe, all the way over to Mountain View. Dick would know that. Is that correct?
What are the practical implications of that?
Yeah.
The mission.
Yeah. So, so.
It's, the, the area, the practical reason is to maintain, this is, that particular area was the core of Loma Linda's beginnings.
Yeah.
And the region's beginnings, the citrus grove, the first settlement, the first, and to maintain that historic district and feel. So as architectural elements, street elements, tree plantings, all of those, all those things have to stay reflective of the historic nature of that area. So we can't go building, you know, not to pick on.
You can't get Frank Lloyd Wright.
Colonial houses or some, or castle. We have to follow a, a palette that is reflective of that area. And the, the palette is actually pretty broad as far as what's, what's allowed in there. And, but we do have to be respectful of that, that historic nature in that area as we.
So that is going to be a limiting factor. To come back to the points that Councilman Pepesky was making, there would be some limitation as to what kind of structures or, or architecture could go into these.
There, there are limitations. You would not be putting an antebellum type house in there. But the spec, I think there's like twenty, you know, for everything from modern to googy to craftsmen to Spanish to Italianate. I mean, there, there's a, a very large spectrum for what is acceptable.
So it's not going to be an onerous limitation?
No.
Okay.
Not to allow Frank Lloyd Wright's to be disparaged here, but Prairie, Prairie style was.
And Prairie is.
Was the allowing side, so Ron.
I was going to go there. I was going to go there. I just wanted to, to let you know though, because of that overlay district process, that over, historic overlay district, it sets up a certain process requirement. And so I'll just defer a little bit to the process. So actually, any development within the Historic Mission District, including any development within this specific plan area, is ultimately, when they come through for their planning area design, not only will they come through to get their design approved, but they have to be given what they, we call a certificate of appropriateness. And that is because they are in the historic district. So when a developer comes in with the idea of a tract development where they might have four to eight to ten different type of pre-designed homes in this district, the idea, when, for example, when Citrus Trails was set up, was that those model homes would come before first the Historical Commission and then Planning Commission and City Council through that appropriate, certificate of appropriateness process for looking at the design of that and that the approval of those would then allow those homes to move forward in, in the future. From a process standpoint, if a developer for the low-density area were to come in and just simply subdivide the lot, then potentially each and every home, as it goes in, if it's being individually privately built, would, would have to obtain their own certificate of appropriateness to go through the process. An alternative to that would be, is if a master developer came in with certain detailed design guidelines or a game plan or something like that, or CCNRs, they could process that as a package plan and then perhaps that would be the design authority to get the certificate to be built under. So it does create a little bit of a complication in terms of the process, but the kind of style of the homes that you're looking at there are, you know, there's an investment in those homes anyway, so it's not that out of line in terms of that process.
So the follow-up question is, who interprets that code in terms of appropriateness of the design to fit these criteria? And this follow-up is, what's the arbitration process if there's a dispute? Does it go to the?
Well.
Planning Commission or where does it go?
Well, it goes straight up to council, actually. So the current process for a certificate of appropriateness is that it starts off in the Historical Commission because they have a lot of knowledge of the specific details of that area. And they then provide a recommendation that gets forwarded and ultimately that comes to the city council. The city council ultimately is the decision maker in that. So whatever appeal process is in place, but I, I don't think that there's a lot of, of room for argument in, in that process. It's deemed appropriate or not appropriate because it meets the findings that are made under that process.
You know, we have, we have Mr. Ship from the Historical Commission here, so maybe that would be a great opportunity to.
To put someone on the spot?
To invite somebody up to talk about that.
Thank you. I'm Jim Ship. I'm the chairman of the Historical Commission. Thank you for giving me a few moments. This is deja vu, I think, for the Historical Commission. At least a number of the members of the commission were on the commission when this happened some years ago. Around 2000, the Army Corps of Engineers finished up a project which opened the Mission District to development. Prior to that time, it was a flood plain and really commercial development couldn't take place. And so there was still a lot of citrus there and some very small residential uses that were mostly historic, going back to the early citrus. The development that was being rushed through the Historical Commission, the Planning Commission, the City Council at that time was development driven. I mean, it was developers attempting to shoehorn as many residential units as possible into that land. And we had dozens of public hearings at that time. I think, Dory, you were involved with some of those. And I don't know if any, any other members of the Planning Commission or the City Council were actively involved in city government at the time, but it was, there was an awful lot of public input and there was an awful lot of, of pressure on local government to do the right thing. And two big developments ended up being pretty far through the approval process when things kind of fell apart for them. The, the economy changed, community standards changed with Measure V and kind of public outcry against small lot development, all of that. So that's the background. The Historical Commission commissioned a report called the Danderman Report. And if you have not had access to it, I would strongly encourage you to read it. It's not a terribly long document and I'm sure City Council staff could provide an electronic copy of the Danderman Report to you. This was our first go-around to try to protect what is really the Fertile Crescent of Loma Linda. In 1776, the same year that the United States declared its independence, the Native Americans in this valley lost theirs. The first Spanish military exploration party came through that year. And shortly thereafter, there was a, a Mission outpost developed on Mission Road, which is how it got its name. And why it's on such a strange angle compared to the rest is that it was really a Native American trade route before it was part of El Camino Real and then really the birthplace of citrus in our valley. So the first orange trees were planted at the Van Leuven Place on Mountain View and also at the Frink Adobe, which we still have as a historic place in Loma Linda. So out of the Danderman Report then, dozens of public hearings on a, a historic district. And staff guided us into making it an overlay district, which is something you do when you have quite a number of historic resources, but they're not all connected like a neighborhood. If you go to most historic districts, you know, there's a, there's a street or two or a few blocks of very old properties and they all sort of have some sort of theme. The theme of the historic district, of our HMOD, the Historic Mission Overlay District, is really the Sanha, the Senki, which follows the alignment of Mission Road about fifty miles to the north of it. And that's, that's the thing that the Danderman Report was about. And that's the thing that the HMOD was built on, was the preservation of the Sanha, interpreting that for future, future generations. Because that water supply that was brought from Mill Creek, dug by Native American laborers, engineered by Spanish engineers, brought water to our community and allowed the citrus industry to develop. There would have been no citrus without the water from Mill Creek. And there really wouldn't be a Loma Linda as we know it without the citrus industry. So that's, that's kind of the thematic approach. So the Historical Commission has, has two real big goals in what you're doing right now and that is the preservation of the Sanha in place. It's mostly buried under about three feet of silt because of flooding in 1919. And it has been preserved through the Hart and Surgical Hospital property, the Barton Vineyard property, and also the Arco AMPM project. When it got to, I'll use the old terms, University Village and Orchard Park, the University Village people were wide open to exploration. They brought in archaeologists. They discovered the alignment. The Redlands Unified School District property has been dug. It's been trench. They've located the, the Sanha in every place it was expected to be. And the plan was that the community trail would be on top of it. It would be preserved in situ, not, not bulldozed and dug, dug up, but just the trail laid on top of it. And there, there it lies. You know, it's, it's coming up on 200 years next year. So next year will be the bicentennial of the Sanha. And our other big concern really beyond what has been said tonight is the Frink Adobe. It's the oldest standing home in Loma Linda. It was started in 1870 by one of our pioneers, Horace Monroe Frink, who was also a citrus pioneer along with Hanson Van Leuven. The Historical Commission does not have an agenda with the Frink Adobe other than preservation. And so we have asked staff to, once maybe some of this is done, put together a workshop involving the City Council, Planning Commission, staff, perhaps some architects, maybe a, a charrette type of arrangement to come up with a viable future for the Frink Adobe, where it really is a resource for the community, left in place as a part of the heritage of, of our community. To your question.
And it's important to note that the Frink family still lives in part on Mission. There's some of them live in.
Yes, that's correct.
Those houses. And the Frink family has been a part of these meetings.
Yes.
With a, with an interest in preserving the heritage of that building. So.
They were instrumental.
They aren't available and they are, friends of mine, actually.
Yes. The Frink family were instrumental in getting it listed on the State Register of Historic Places. And they would be keenly interested in us finding a future for the Frink that would, that would fund its preservation and restoration and give it a, a valued use. And we really don't have a closed mind on what that would be, whether it's residential, commercial, professional, or institutional use, city-related. It really doesn't matter. We just need to do something so that it stays around. In answer to your question, I don't think the Historical Commission, in my knowledge, and I've been involved with it for eighteen years, has ever turned down a certificate of appropriateness. There have often been mitigations, tweakings to the, to the application process, appropriate with the district and, and the, the standards for the district. But I don't think council has ever had to overrule us on, on anything. And I doubt that you ever will. The, the commission is pretty knowledgeable. They're pretty experienced in this. And most developers who come to the Historical Commission have read the documents. They, they know what, what's expected of them. They're not trying to bulldoze their way through, through our heritage. They're, they're respectful of it. And we appreciate that. And we will offer requests for mitigation and, and usually it goes extremely well. And you never hear about it because it, it doesn't become a conflict. But I must say that the Historical Commission is really a, a body that provides guidance and, and recommendations. And that's really, that's the extent of our authority is to recommend. Once that recommendation has been given, if you felt that we were not strict enough on them, you know, you could overrule our recommendation. The council could, could certainly say, no, you know, that this, you've let this one go past. On the other hand, if we were being too strict and, and it just didn't make sense, the council could choose to say, well, it doesn't matter what they say. You, you have the ultimate authority and, and can decide whether something passes a, a certificate of appropriateness.
Please answer. Thank you.
Okay. Sorry.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Any more questions?
Are, are some or any of all of these areas going to be homeowners associations? I mean, is it up to the developer to decide that or is it, is it made so that they're not associations? And I guess what I'm getting at is are there going to be some common areas that the, I know you have, you're talking about landscape districts, but are there going to be actual associations where there'd be common areas that the people living there would have to belong to?
Typically, the residential components are done through HOAs. Occasionally, they're done through Landscape Maintenance District, but it makes it a little more challenging and especially with the water detention requirements. Those little pocket areas and those little detention, and probably areas as big as the empty, you know, the, the well here in the council chamber, that has to be maintained as part of the homeowners and then a group of houses requirements. And even if it's not like an HOA that has tennis courts and everything else, it's at least an HOA for maintenance purposes. So usually that's the way that's done. The other way is to do like a mellaroo or something, an assessment district, which is something that is problematic in other cities. And I think historically, our council has really shied away from dealing with those.
So the council makes the decision or who makes the decision?
The developer will propose a mechanism to accomplish that, whatever that mechanism may be. And the easiest and cleanest for us has always been creating an HOA and then we don't have to mess with it. You guys take care of it. We're not stuck with the bill. And there aren't, there aren't other assessments placed on the property that are hidden costs that the homeowner doesn't see until they, you know, they get their first tax bill.
Okay. Thank you very much for a very thorough and comprehensive report.
Thank you.
Is this a city manager, was this a meant as a, as a public opportunity for public comment?
The purpose of this was to provide the final phase of feedback and input from the council. And the Planning Commission, if you remember, we had a couple of fairly large, raucous discussion groups in the community room. And you guys are kind of sitting as the evil developers now. So this is the Developers Board meeting on what this, what this, what's going to come back as a proposed project. going to come back as a proposed project to next time you're sitting here as the city council and the planning commission making the decision. So if, if you look, kind of those analogies tonight is the last, the last chance for input from the developer, the board of developers, before we take it to the city council and the planning commission for approval.
Okay, just, this is not a formal public hearing, that will come down the road, but it is a public meeting, and the public always has the opportunity to comment. So without opening it up first, I'll ask anybody here on the dais if anybody else wants to make any other comment, not necessarily a question, but maybe a comment.
I would just make a general comment. Jim alluded to the fact that planning this area has been a very lengthy process, it started back in two thousand and five, and I think we've come a long way, and I do really appreciate the work that you've done in putting this together. You've had to rely on a lot of cooks that you've allowed in this kitchen and trying to accommodate everybody's needs and wants, and it was very well put together in a way that I think to a certain extent meets all of our taste, so to speak. There's no doubt about it, this plan has definitely improved compared to what it was proposed in two thousand and five. I was one of the few, I think my, I was looking at the dais here, and I think the only two people that are really involved, except for maybe Mr. Nichol, in fighting the old plan was Mr. Galant. I mean, we went door to door throughout the whole community, we walked every street and collected signatures, and we were not happy with what was proposed at the time, and the council wasn't very receptive to the folks who were complaining, and a lot of the meetings that eventually we had was the fights that was created afterwards. Actually, what they had proposed there was twenty-five hundred homes, two thousand of them were all apartments, there was hardly any park space, and I believe if I'm not mistaken, there only may be two, two or three public open meetings, literally, for people input, and the people who were complaining about it were basically ignored, and subsequently, those people then created a group, saved Loma Linda, and we went along and we actually referendum those, you know, those plans, we ended up having huge court battles, we went to court, it went all the way to appeals court, I mean, it went through very lengthy battles. And sometimes you, it does require that in order to achieve what I think we're achieving here, and I want to kind of commend everyone, I mean, everybody up here on the dais, all the planning commissioners, all the council people, the staff, everybody, Conrad especially, Conrad's been listening to all of our input for, gosh, years now, and it's so great to see that all those concerns were implemented in this, in a way in which it, it doesn't cause too much friction. It, it, as I was sitting here and just listening to all the commentary, I'd wanted to make sure that we don't in any way criticize you and what you did in the sense that I think you've done a really, really good job. Everybody just has clarity questions about, and still concerns about certain things that, making sure that we address everything, because this is a pretty comprehensive plan with a lot of details, and there's a lot of things that we may not be aware of that causes problems years down the road, and we want to make sure that it's planned in a way that people can be proud of even after we're all gone. So I really want to just commend everybody for doing the really hard work on this, and I know we're still going to get public input, there's still going to be people who are going to have issues with certain parts of it. You know, if, if we as this, what's unique about what we're doing today here is like we are literally the landowners, and that's why we have a lot more input in what goes here versus the other parts of this project, we had other landowners, and we had to kind of accommodate them. Well, here, we're in a unique situation where we get to plan, and that's why this is a very cool and unique way to plan a community. If we owned the whole land, I think the whole thing would have been even better improved. But I truly believe that when this is all built, it's probably going to be one of the coolest areas, not just in Loma Linda, but in the valley, because I think it's well thought out, and I think it, it kind of forces you to a certain extent to think outside the box, because I've seen a lot of the projects you've done, and they're all very good, but this is definitely very unique, that incorporates a lot of, a lot of design areas. So anyway, I just wanted to commend everybody for doing an amazing job on this, and I look forward to seeing it come to fruition.
Thank you, yes, sir.
I hate to comment on a detail after such an inspiring wrap-up statement, oh, that was, that was nice, but I've got one, one last kind of thing as I'm looking at the, the map, and I know we talked about this at, at the earlier meetings, but that, that middle school is going to have somewhere between a thousand and twelve hundred students, they're going to be coming and going every day, and I know there's been lots of concern expressed over traffic off of Mission. If we want to try to control that internally, I know we've got those two cul-de-sacs that kind of end into the middle school, that the district itself could create an internal roadway on its own property on the eastern boundary there, but the likelihood, if we want to control that traffic and not have it end up on Mission, or, you know, if we, if we did something, and maybe you've already factored that into your traffic analysis things, but the likelihood that, that all those twelve hundred kids coming and going, other than the walkers and the bike riders from the neighborhood, those two park and whatever that lower internal road citrus might end up being the primary ingress egress from those kids every day.
Well, well, actually, we, we heard that at the, at the last community workshop, and we did spend quite a bit of time talking about that and the options. There was, when we started this whole community workshop process, we had a representative from the school district there with us, and, and they were kind enough to share with us a, a concept plan that had been done previously when the, when the property was purchased, and, and that concept that they had, it, because, you know, they didn't know what was going to happen here by necessity, they designed their entire access program coming off of Mission, but they had also coordinated with Lewis with the purchase of this property for an easement along here. So there is a dedicated easement right here as part of the purchase agreement from that. But what we've done with the road plan is that we were concerned about the, the traffic impacts along Mission here, not only because of the homeowners to the south here, but also just how it would affect Mission, and, and not just from a traffic flow standpoint, but from a visual standpoint, too, what kind of roadway improvements would it take to do that. And so what we have done is set this up so that these streets actually do come through with the concept that they would connect to the school, and you're absolutely right, we, we've talked with the school district, they're open to putting in kind of their own internal roadway system here, so that this kind of becomes a main, a main access with the drop-off points here, we're not worrying about drop-offs conflicting here, and that the access then on Mission would be restricted in some way just to serve parking, perhaps to faculty parking area here, or that bus would either ingress or egress from there. So it, it splits the, the traffic responsibility, access responsibility through numerous points within the project so that not everybody takes a single big hit.
Good, thank you.
Not, not to belabor that, but we talked about the bus access coming off of Mountain View, and there's no way that intersection can support that, so we, we definitely have to emphasize that that's not a possibility, the bus access off of Mission, because the intersection of Mountain View doesn't, would not support that.
Oh. What box is that?
Can I add something?
Yeah.
Not specifically related to the school, but somewhat related, has been, as it's been stated numerous times, trying to emphasize the walkability of this community so that you have a much less, a less frequency of people living down in this corner, driving up to the restaurant, that you make it attractive for them to walk to it. But another feature that I, I'm not sure that has been talked about this evening is to your initial question, Mr. Nichol's about, is there a, a method of attracting or somehow doing greater than just an encouragement of the Loma Linda University and, and the VA workers living here? One of the things that maybe could be done by the city council is to reach out to Loma Linda University, who has a very extensive tram system already for the transportation between their facilities that just keeps getting bigger and bigger, and if you had one or two designated spots within this community that are for trams that take them to work and back, you eliminate more car trips, and so that, that might be an enhancement to attract some of the workers that are here, and-
The, the other thing we didn't discuss was public transportation, and I just have to put some props out there, because we happen to have the chairman of Omni-Trans sitting on our, on our dais here, right? So-
Drive a bus every Thursday.
Right, but, but that's a pretty big deal, because Councilman Daly, in his ancillary duties as a council member here, is also the chairman of Omni-Trans. So those are things to discuss and take advantage of those opportunities while we have those, especially in, in some of that, that northern part up there, so.
No, it's a good point, very good point. I, I had just one other question based on the discussion, where, where did we leave the water feature? We talked about it and its feasibility, what is your take home from the discussion so that you don't work on something that surprises anybody on the dais?
Well, we do want to color up-
I don't mean to put you on the spot, but-
No, no, it's fine. We do want to color up those concepts. We could color up a second concept showing the lake if you want.
Say that again.
We could show, we could do one concept with the lake, one concept with the riverbed, or there's creek, would that-
Yeah, no, that, that would be, that would be helpful, as long as we can afford it and do it. Because the city manager has a big boat, he's looking for a lake to put it in, then he's-
Okay, we'll do it.
It's going to be twelve inches deep.
It's three feet.
Three feet.
Okay, so if that is it here up here, is there anybody in the public that would like to step forward and comment? Come on down, sir.
Good evening. My name's Wilson Parcells, and I live at two six one zero Mission Road, one of those historic homes. Matter of fact, when we purchased it from the Van Leuven family and their relatives, the plaque was still on the, on the, the house just outside Van Leuven. My comment and question is about the Oak Woodlands Preserve that you had talked about. I was just there yesterday walking my dog, and there are quite a few oak trees, as we know, that are there. You said that it's going to be a three-acre park, and that's, some of them are going to be designated to be preserved. My question is, how large of an acreage comprises all of those oak trees, and how many oak trees are there, in there, and how many will be preserved of that group?
I'm going, I'll add to his question, maybe you can answer this, too. I had, had kind of similar question earlier. How do we preserve those trees? I, I mean, is it, is it kind of sealed off, or do you envision people being able to walk into that area, through that area? Just, not, wasn't certain, I was going to ask that earlier.
Okay, so let me start by, I'm going to refer back to the Draft and Environmental Impact Report, because the, the biological resources are addressed in that, and we did a tree study that identifies the oak trees, it plots them on a map, provides numbers, so if you were to look at that document, in particular, section, so, section four point three, it does talk about the oak trees, provides some exhibits in their numbers, the biological report, which is attached, is an appendix to the draft EIR.
Do, do you have that there? Can you throw out the numbers, just?
Yeah, I knew you were going to put me on the spot, hang on, because I, I don't remember the number of oak trees off the top of my head, hang on. Well, it'll certainly be in the staff report that comes before you, and, hang on.
Just might be hard for some folks to locate that report, so just do, thanks.
Patience, please. Seems like ages ago since we put this thing out, I've forgotten what it-
He probably already counted them yesterday, he just wants to keep you on it.
I know, I know, he's checking, well, they are documented on a map. Okay, let's see.
But the goal is to keep all of them.
The goal is to keep them, so actually, there's actually a mitigation, so the mitigation measures, if, if you don't mind me just passing up the number of trees, but I, I want to say it's at least twenty in that ballpark kind of a thing. And, and some of those oak trees, too, are within the, just a handful of them are within the citrus grows, citrus groves, or I'm sorry, citrus trails project area, too, within this little square here, which is kind of why that got partitioned off, and then, let's just go to that map. That's a good one. So going back to the Environmental Impact Report, as a mitigation measure, the oak trees must be maintained, so that, and it's, it's, this is the only area within the general plan, resources element, conservation resources element, that identifies oak woodlands within the city of Loma Linda, and though they're somewhat degraded because there's been some dumping that happens there and, and other various activity going on, for the most part, the oak trees are healthy, and the general plan requires that this area be preserved. And so it is being preserved as part of the plan and design process, but we had an option to treat this as kind of a park area, as a, as a park, meaning as a public park area, and felt that it didn't really lend itself to that, and it also kind of would have required it to be somewhat segregated from the development around it. So the idea was to come up with a concept that allowed the, the oak trees and the oak grove area to be integrated as kind of like a landscape feature at the tail end of that Main Street area. And let me just go back to, and if you look at this exhibit, this one, you know, the idea here is with your Main Street here, and this potential access coming in here, you have this beautiful oak grove park, it's kind of like a, you know, this is what you're looking into as you drive into here and you enter into your Main Street area, and it touches up along the Main Street. So we wanted to have public access within here, too, so we've integrated the decomposed granite trail loop system around it, we've integrated that in as an extension of the Paseo, and the trail system leading up to the backside of the school area, and one of the requirements of the, of the mitigation plan for the, from the environmental document is that an oak tree preservation plan be developed. So when that area comes in as a planning area to be designed, part of their landscape plan is to develop a, you know, oak woodland preservation plan that will set out specific drip line areas that need to be protected, and they'll analyze at that level of detail the location of where the trails should go so that the soil's not getting overly compacted. Overall, as, if, if, as that plan works the way it's supposed to, the health of that oak woodland community will actually improve because it will be better cared for.
Okay, anybody else from the public? All right, thank you for this report, and I don't think there's any action that we need to take on this, right? Because we will be back here in a month.
June, June twelfth, and we'd like to, what do we do when we close it? I lost the word.
Continue.
Adjourn both the planning commission and the city council to the twelfth.
Okay, so adjourned until June twelfth, and the-
Just some questions, clarifications, on the twelfth, we're going to have public input, and the council votes on it, or the planning commission votes on it separately as well?
We, the twelfth is the public hearing, so this, you are now out of development, when we're done here, we stop being developers, and then we become the-
No, I understand that part, but my question for logistic is, do we have two separate votes on the twelfth?
So, it, it, do you want to-
That's a city attorney question.
So, so I'll lay it out, and then you can add to it, but the, so it's just like the normal process, is that we'll, we'll give, we'll open the public hearing and give a presentation simultaneously to both the planning commission and the city council, and there'll be discussion, and then it will go to a point where it's the planning commission discussion and, and taking a motion on a recommendation to-
And, and taking a motion on a recommendation to forward to the Planning Commission. And you get to hear it all currently. So then they will take a vote on the recommendation. And then the act, and then the decision action will go to Planning Commission.
All in the same meeting, basically, one after the other?
The idea is to have it, yes, happen consecutively.
Barring any other technicalities.
Exactly. And hopefully they'll, you'll be able to take action that night. And if not, you'll continue it.
Okay, thank you.
The Planning Commission makes a recommend, recommendation to the City Council. Then the City Council takes final action.
I like having everybody up here on the dais together. We need to do this more often. Okay, so adjourned till the next meeting unless you want to stick around for all the other exciting business, the consent calendar and all those other things. Take it not, as you guys are running out the door. All right, for purposes of time for the remaining council members, we have the consent calendar. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move, that we move the consent calendar?
I have a first and a second. All in, all in favor of the, moving the consent calendar?
Aye.
Okay, that is moved. Any old business, new business, reports of councilmen? Reports of officers?
No, sir.
Okay, that adjourns our City Council meeting.
Mayor Bojim, I did just have one announcement.
Hold on, go ahead.
This Sunday evening, they, for those who are not leaving town for holiday, there is an event in Fire Station One. Fire Fighters Association was hosting a movie night at the firehouse.
Yes, it is actually a Disney movie. It is planes, no, planes, fire rescue, right? So it's kind of very appropriate.
So if you're not traveling and you're in town, there's an event in town at six o'clock Sunday evening at Station One.
And, and I know that the, the fire department had to pay rights because that's a Disney movie. So they've invested some money in this as a fundraiser. So hopefully, if you are available as you're walking out the door, we'll do some more marketing on that.
So until there's a movie, a movie night, Park down in North Park, come to Station One, Sunday evening.
Thank you, sir.
Is there free food?
No, it's concession, all benefiting the charities.
Oh, I might be too busy then.
You can bring your own. Madam Clerk.
If I might, I wanted to announce that the City Hall is also a mail ballot drop-off location.
Oh, that's right.
Anybody wanting to, rather than mail their ballot, we have a box in our finance department where they can deposit any San Bernardino County ballot.
For anywhere in the county.
Anywhere in the county.
Okay. I also know that they're doing early voting at the ROV. And they have a drop box there too as well, so. Okay, so that concludes our council meeting. Moving on to the housing authority agenda. I will open it, call to order. Everybody's here except for the mayor. Any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Okay, any conflicts of interest? I hear none. We have the consent calendar. I have a first. I have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye. Chair and member reports, reports of officers.
No, sir.
That adjourns our housing authority. And lastly, the successor agency agenda. Do we have any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Anybody from the public wishing to speak? Colin? No? Okay. Susanna? All right, I have the consent calendar there also. I have a first. First and a second. Are you ready, John, or no?
I'm going to charge more next time. But your meetings are too short for me to charge any more than that. Sorry.
Okay, we have a first and a second. All in favor? Aye.
So, so you get thirty-three dollars for one minute?
I, I actually spread them over a little bit, the other meetings.
Attorneys, you're, that's the, you're supposed to do it in fifteen-minute increments, right?
That's true.
Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you.